All right, it is six threes. We'll call this meeting order with the roll for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
All right. Tom Moon, we need you to step out front here briefly and we will read this thing. Whatever you want. So I state here-
I, Tom Moon, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of an official member of the Board of Education of the North Loop Community School District two hundred. According to the Constitution of the United States, your Constitution has stated laws of the state to the best that I can. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who see clearly before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize the board that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by the majority vote at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by the majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Congratulations. Tom, you might be in the pro temp.
Yeah.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Ellenson?
Here.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Here.
Mr. Havil, please?
Here.
Mr. Kinzer?
Here.
Mrs. Maxey?
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Approval of the agenda? Anyone have anything they want to change?
I'd like to flip-flop unfinished business and new business in the order.
Would you like to move ten to eleven and eleven to ten?
I'd also like to pull the coaching positions off of the consent agenda.
Just that section of personnel? Move that into new business?
Would that go in new business or would it go in executive? Are you going to be talking about people in the positions? Would it go to executives?
Just the positions.
All right. Should we put that to new business then?
Yeah.
All right, any further adjustments to the agenda? And we've motioned to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Audience to visitors, we will skip over that. Treasurers report.
As presented unless someone has any questions.
Seeing none, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Good, tomorrow is our last day of school. Want to invite the board to our breakfast in the morning at the high school at eight o'clock. The N B A is putting that on and at there we will be recognizing our retirees as well as our years of service to all of our employees. So if you can join us, that'd be great. Also too, I wanted to thank the board members for helping with graduations last week at the high school and then last night at the middle school. Both graduations went very well. Once again, I updated your board goals document and uploaded it to your packet, so you should have that in there for you. Last, well, I guess about a week and a half ago, Grant Anderson, the G I S coordinator from Boone County, had been studying the southern border of our district, especially along the Orth Road portion of the boundary. We have some weird little carve-outs that are along that Orth Road boundary there. And what he was doing was making sure that the right taxing districts are reflected in their system through their office down there. He's investigating the process for what it would take to make that just a clean line with Orth Road being the divider. And as we're looking into it though, we are seeing that it's a very, very large process that would involve us, the Belvedere School District, the R O E, the taxpayers, and it's a big ordeal to take on. So I'm not sure what he wants to do or where he wants to go with it yet. He was just looking to see if there was a way to clean that up and make that boundary a little easier. But I'll keep you posted as I get more from Grant. So any questions on that one?
Yeah, Mike, I'm curious how that is done. If somebody wanted to make a change to that, does one person in particular just do it and approve it?
That, I believe, is done through the county board office and then the R O E, that process.
Is there such a thing as school district gerrymandering or does it need to be ... Is it politically or is it just numbers based and somebody's supposed to keep track of those numbers?
Tax rates have a big effect on that too. But I know the state's attorney has to be one of them that they're trying to give us from Belvedere. She doesn't want to go. There's a lot of people that would be affected by that, by that boundary change, just what he was suggesting. So I would imagine it'll be a tough move. At the last board meeting, the board asked me to follow up with our staff, employees, and unions about our committees. And I did get a chance to work with both presidents and here's some of the feedback that they gave me. They felt right now that we had enough committees and that to grow it might be difficult just finding time for people to, people and members for more committees if it was to grow more. They said they really felt that the administration and the board are listening and soliciting their thoughts and they thought that this was the best, that the morale has been with the district as far as positivity goes in a long time. Time, they said, is still a critical factor and most felt that they would not want the committees to be added and scheduling the meetings might be more difficult if we grew it. One of the things that I had mentioned and they thought it might be a good time was over summer was let's review the current committee members that we have and confirm if they want to remain on the committee and over the summer it'd be a good time to add any committee members to round out our committees walking into the new school. That's all I have for my report tonight.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. Policy committee. Tom, it's you and Mary.
There hasn't been a meeting.
Hasn't been a meeting.
Yep, so we'll skip over that one.
Unless Mary was added.
Nope.
We're due though.
Business services committee?
Didn't meet either.
Okay. So long-range planning?
We didn't meet. I'm sure we'll be meeting in the next month to see how Jim's getting started with his summer.
He did want me to let you know that asbestos removal was getting ready to start at the end of this week. Roofing, he was hoping for the middle school would be starting next week and then the windows at Manchester in July. So just an update for you there, that's the scheduling, tentative schedule.
C I A?
We did meet and we will have a presentation from Molly in a little bit under new business. And we briefly discussed A P tests and the results from the past and moving forward with that and I would imagine what it would be hearing from somebody in a few months. We just threw out some ideas and discussed it a little bit.
Okay, thank you. All of that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have a motion on the consent agenda.
We approve the consent agenda with modifications that Ed suggested earlier.
Motion?
A second?
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Ellenson?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Havil?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And we will come on to new business, the May 2017 bills.
Got a question on one of the bills. There's an item on the bills payable from Conserve for a product called Tri-Mac. Do we have somebody in the district that has a certification to apply pesticides?
Do we have any? I would have to check with Jim.
That's not a difficult certification if I'm not mistaken, right? But somebody does need to be certified?
What is Tri-Mac for?
Weed killer.
Weed killer. They need to be a certified something applicant or something like that?
For hours of education and test.
We can get back to you on that. Anything else in the bills?
I don't really know that we ought to be paying that unless we know that we've got somebody certified to do it because that would be in violation of the state statutes.
Well, could we pay the bill, just not put the product down at this point?
But if we approve paying it, I mean, we know that we're not supposed to be doing that. What's the liability for us to do something like that? The assumption is it's already applied.
Well, if it's already applied, it's not the company, the vendor's fault. If we've used the product, you can't return it. We can get somebody certified if no one's certified.
Has it already been applied? Does anybody, would anybody know?
I'd have to check.
Is it possible that it could have been purchased but not yet applied?
Could be that too.
Hospital is probably highly unlikely. Came in issue, we had a neighbor that had a Japanese beetle outbreak a number of years ago with nursery stock and we investigated where we were at with that process. We didn't have the ability to apply the pesticides on site.
We did.
We did not.
We did not. And how long ago was that?
We went and got the certification to do that. We carried it all those years, were required, certain record-keeping, were required to post re-entry times to those areas that have been treated to the public.
Did you know who was certified?
I believe that there's also supposed to be a posting for this part of the school policy for the public as far as putting pesticides down. So.
Do you know who was certified at the time when you were there? Who was that?
Me.
Just you?
I'll follow up with Jim. See, because I know he's got different certifications, but I don't know which ones.
Ed, do you know if there's a grade of herbicide and pesticide? Can somebody go out and get?
You can purchase general-use pesticides, but you can only apply them on your own property. Second, that you become an employee for your municipality, you fall out of that jurisdiction. Doesn't matter if it's Roundup or whatever it is, you need to be certified.
Or anything you bought?
When you go to those classes, you got guys leaning out of state trucks spraying Roundup on guardrails down the tollway, but they still have to have that certification. And more importantly, the record-keeping, the aspect of it has to be kept for five years.
We'll follow up.
So with the thing to do to pull that in hopes that we haven't yet applied it, make sure that we have a certified applicant before we approve the payment of the bill?
Okay, we can. Is the payment of the bill gonna make a difference though?
It seemed to me that if you've already bought it and used it, you have to pay the bill and then deal with the fallout afterwards. If you have the understanding, if we haven't used it, we can return it.
Maybe we could return it.
But I would think you'd want to give them the option to pay it if we've already used it. But I'm...
Yeah, I agree.
We likely wouldn't return it though, would we? We would just get the certification?
If we have someone willing to do it in town.
Because as Ed's saying, it doesn't matter what grade of pesticide it is, we're going to apply something. So somebody should be certified.
The problem that you have with that certification, and I've had the same one, is that it's only offered a couple. We're probably past the window when the state offers the certification, the classes for it. In fact, I only recall it being done in the spring. I don't remember it being done.
Most of them are done in the wintertime, get ready for people to be applying pesticides during the summer, spring and summertime, so.
Would we be able to hire it out then and have somebody come spray even if we had the product that's certified?
Almost all lawn companies are certified, have certifications, so we have it. We have options as far as having it done for the summer.
So if we haven't done it, we can hire somebody to do it, get somebody on the train next year.
Yeah, I'll follow up to see if we have certification. We don't, we'll have somebody certified do it. If it hasn't been done already, we won't be doing it again without somebody.
Good point, Ed.
It's part of a bigger discussion. Joe and I were at a Booster Club meeting in which a number of members talked about the Roundup fairy coming up and spraying flower beds and stuff around schools. I mean, this idea that just anybody can come up and just apply pesticides indiscriminately, we have to get control of it. If we have somebody that has a certification, fine, then we're fine. They have to be under that person's control and supervision. The person applying the pesticides don't have to have the certification. Somebody just has to have it that's supervising the people that are doing it, so.
Are there?
Should we want to just pay the bill and correct the other stuff for now? Yeah, I mean, if we have the stuff and we haven't sprayed it, maybe we can just have somebody use our product.
And I'll follow up on the certification side and make sure we're following more.
I would make a motion to pay the May 2017 bills along with Mike's follow-up on this.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Havil?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
No.
Mr. Ellenson?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to the health insurance renewal.
Yeah, we're asking the board to approve the health insurance premium renewal at 5.9% increase, slightly lower than last year, which came in at 6.4. The insurance committee met last week to discuss the renewals and this is the recommendation that comes from the committee. Julia, anything you'd like to add that came from the committee discussion? I know we talked about H F As, we're not quite there.
H R A.
H R A, excuse me, H R A. But it's still something that we may want to keep on the table and explore in the future
Yes.
as a savings.
We also talked about joining that conglomerate again with all the teachers at schools, but it just didn't sound like, we're not citing yes or no now, but.
Right, that doesn't happen until September first and until they can get more data back. If it's something that I think we need to hear it, I'll bring him to the board to talk. Otherwise, we'll stay where we're at.
Yeah, it didn't sound a lot different than it was for us anyways, so we'll see where it goes. Motion on the health insurance renewal.
I move we approve the health insurance renewal.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Havil?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Ellenson?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
All right, on to the risk assessment plan option adoption.
Yeah, and last year's audit, we were cited for needing to have a risk assessment plan for our district. We were able to find some samples and work off some of the other risk assessments from area districts and we put together one that reflects our practices and policies and we are asking the board to approve the plan for our school district, which meets the audit criteria. Julia, anything on the risk? First time we've ever been hit with that.
Right, that, so that might be something new in what I did with that risk assessment plan is I borrowed another school district's and made it mine.
So is page three then just a typo where it says district two oh five specific?
Yeah.
Typo, yeah, okay, sorry. I will correct that.
We have a motion on the risk assessment plan adoption.
I move to approve the risk assessment plan adoption with Julia's typo repaired.
What page was that?
Page three.
Page two of the document.
Oh, there it is, okay.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Ellenson?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Havil?
Yes.
Motion carries, we'll move on to curriculum update.
Yeah, in your packet, we provided some map results that we went over at our last curriculum committee meeting. The results are from spring to spring. Molly also provided a summary, which I believe was in your packet as well. We've asked Molly here tonight, she was going to quick go through and kind of give us an update of where we are at with the curriculum process and talk about where we've gone, where we're going, and give the board a chance to ask any questions. This is something that Joe had asked Molly to share with the board tonight, so I'll turn it over to Molly at this point.
So we'll be kind of working through the slides that Kelly just pulled up. Joe asked me to give this report that I had given to the committee last week. So part of it, when we first go into it, it really kind of summarizes kind of what is curriculum to help us understand a little bit more about it because I think sometimes we talk a lot about curriculum, but we don't always understand what curriculum actually is or what it's not. So one of the first pieces is curriculum, it changes, it changes all the time. It'll change based on, no, you were good. It'll change based on who teaches it, new resources, new innovations, so for that reason it's never complete. There are, I talked about there are four different types, well, there are many types of curriculum, but I focused in on four different types of curriculum. There's the recommended, which kind of comes to us from standards that are adopted by the state. The written curriculum, which is our textbooks, curriculum documents. The taught curriculum, which are the activities that we put into action and variances based on student needs and other activities that we implement. And then there's the assessed curriculum, which are those ideas that are tested and used to show growth in learning. So I kind of developed a little kind of cycle per se. The cycle can actually go more of a spider web and go all over, but just for our purposes, we'll kind of talk about the cycle, so I have a little graphic there. And then as we move forward in the slides, that graphic will be on the top of a lot of the slides, so you can kind of understand where, what point of the cycle we're talking about. But, so how that falls in, how this graphic falls in with those four curriculum types, when we talk about purpose and objective, that's referring to that recommended curriculum. When we're talking about selecting learnings, content and experiences, that becomes, that's our written curriculum. The organization of content and experiences, that is when our written curriculum turns out to what, it becomes the taught curriculum. And then that evaluation is where we assess that curriculum and we assess what we've decided, what we taught and what we've honed in on to see if it's really working. So we'll talk a little bit more about each of those aspects. So with science this year, we started out looking at reviewing the new standards, the key shifts of the old science standards to the new next-generation science standards. Our new standards really dictated new ways of teaching, not just the stand and deliver model that we probably grew up being used to. The new standards are also, when we really looked at them, we realized that we're probably going to need some new materials because what we had is not aligned to what we need to be teaching based upon between those standards. And then we also have looked at, we need to support, we need to support our teachers with both training and items and looking at, we're hoping that they make these pedagogical leaps, we have to help them out. So we did bring in some training this year to help with that. So one of the first things I took the science committees through is looking at priority standards. So there are tons and tons of standards, especially when you're looking at elementary, there's, it's going to be impossible to really teach every standard to mastery. So we look at what are priority standards or essentials, we look at the essentials of it, of our content. And by focusing in on those topics, that we can really dig deep into those and we find that when you do that, instead of just doing a drive-by approach to curriculum, that the kids actually, they really learn what you're teaching them and then they're able to connect those ideas to the ones that we might not have spent very much time on. So it actually shows quite a bit of growth on assessment. We also spent some time looking at, within those priority standards, we wanted to make sure that we could, how much time we needed to devote, what resources we have, and then whatever we decided we want to make priority, we needed to make sure we could say that, yes, we guarantee we are going to be teaching these and we're going to guarantee that we are going to teach these as hard as we can to master with each student. We looked through gaps, perhaps gaps and overlaps to make sure that what we do in first grade is not the same thing you do in second grade and the same thing you do in third grade. But we also wanted to make sure, even though we're looking at priorities, that we don't just leave out one thing in particular. So we made sure to look for those items. Then starting to look at, we realized, like I said, that we knew we were going to need some materials and resources, so we started looking more at curriculum supports to align to those new standards. Starting in January, we really, the committees for the K five and six eight started really digging in to different materials that were out there. I think we started looking at about sixteen published serieses, just kind of looking through to see, is this going to support the next-generation science standards the way we need it to? We took from those sixteen to seriously review approximately seven, and that's at the K eight level, using a rubric and to really see, does this, is this, what do we want to pilot? What do we really want to get our hands on and dig deep into? And then we went to, basically it was four series at the K eight level, two for K five and two for six eight. We were able to pilot those after spring break. It was a very short pilot, so I know for next year, we're going to try to have a longer one if we're looking at materials. So, and I'm hoping that, I'd like to bring an adoption for textbook materials and supplies forward to the board June meeting, June board meeting, sorry. High school has newer materials, so we're not looking so much as an adoption there, but looking at making really in-depth curriculum guides to take their materials and see what else we need to add in to get to those N G S S at the high school level. So the, we're going to get to scope and sequence and the, high school's been working on curriculum guides for biology and chemistry. I've asked them also for physics, but I don't know if that will be done. We also had time constraints. So the hope was before we started this next school year, I'm not sure the physics portion will happen. And then since our taught, the taught curriculum changes is based on the development of student experiences, the guides will continue to evolve and be reviewed yearly. K eight will review their new adoption and develop a pacing guide, especially for that K four, because the, K four does not have time in their day to focus on science necessarily every single day, so they kind, they do a flip-flop with science and social studies. So they've really honed in on certain aspects and like I said, we did that gap and overlap so we can make sure that all aspects are hit. But we'll need to develop a pacing guide for them so that all teachers, not just the teachers on the committee, know what things we're guaranteeing we're working on doing across the district. So aligning our priority standards to the text, noting chapters and sections that we're going to be teaching. In school year eighteen- In school year eighteen, we'll continue with curriculum guide creation, late fall and late spring to document our taught curriculum and resources, and high school will continue to, with their courses. So, our continual science work, some of the things, as we get to that evaluation stage, we need to start, we'll start asking ourselves questions such as, are the chosen standards what we really hope them to be? How can we better approach and meet those standards? What are the supports that we need? How are our kids reaching those standards? And part of that, understanding whether our kids are reaching it, is getting to common assessments, that I know every third grade class is taking, is taking those same assessments to see, did they get that standard? Do we have to go back and reteach, which is great, or, you know, are we good? Are we moving on, and are these what we want them to be? And we'll just kinda continue to repeat and revise that process as necessary, 'cause as we see with evaluation, it might go back to the standards, which is our purpose and objective, it might go back to how we organize it, so that's where your, our cycle gets kinda spider webbing. And then for future continued curriculum work, like I said, we're gonna continue science with at least semester meetings for curriculum guide creation, hopefully get to common assessments in school year nineteen and beyond. We'll continue the ELA revisions of the maps that have been created. Next year, start math's curriculum review cycle, looking at resources and the priority standards, and then continue with curriculum guides in school year nineteen and common assessments in school year twenty. Social studies, start looking at that in school year nineteen, and then go back to ELA for their in-depth revision and review in school year twenty. Kinda the goals of the curriculum. Questions, do you have?
Molly, you used the term, I just choked, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No. I'm not tearing up because of what you said.
I don't know. It was riveting.
You used the term curriculum guide, and we have like a school curriculum guide, right? A larger one, you're talking about something smaller.
Here is kinda the difference, and this is something Jake and I talked about and Mike at the beginning of the year. So, what, what you're kinda referring to is the high school course curriculum guide, which kinda shows what the courses are that you offer for students to take, kinda has a little paragraph about each course, correct? And so, when I'm referring to a curriculum guide, that is actually, and I don't have a copy here, it's a document that goes into, here are the standards we're looking at, here are some of those, what students should know, and how they're gonna show us that they know it. It goes into more in-depth about what are the resources we're gonna be, well, what are those resources that we are using? What are some other possible resources? Maybe what are some labs that are possibilities? Or, the whole committee might say, every student should do this lab, and so we say that's a guaranteed then. So, it's more, it's a couple-page document for each unit that really kinda digs in to what that taught curriculum looks like, but without require, without saying, every teacher teaches this on day one, every teacher teaches this on day two. So, without scripting, we still wanna give teachers their academic freedom, but it kind of, it gives them the banks of the river.
And would a curriculum guide span K through twelve, or would it just be horizontal, all third grade?
So, what you're thinking of is more like a curriculum map, where you're mapping the curriculum and looking across that. I'm looking at the standards in, you know, what standards are we hitting all through third grade? Or what units are, you know, what are different units through third grade? A curriculum map is kinda like, you know, a map when you're driving across the state of Illinois, where a curriculum guide is gonna give you more of that, that Poplar Grove map. It really digs it down and in, and it would be more for each, each course would have their own, and for each kind of chapter in the course, or each unit of study.
And I told you at our meeting, just for the benefit of everybody, that I had recently heard that perhaps we're spending too much time on curriculum development, and I thought you had a great answer to that. What was your answer to, perhaps we're focusing and investing too much effort on curriculum development? Do you remember?
I don't, but I probably said no.
You did say no.
That was the same face.
It was probably quite emphatic, too.
You had the data in front of you, but you showed the growth that occurred. I, I believe you had some maps data in front of you, and you said, well, just tell that person that you can see a sixteen percent increase in.
So, and we went back, and I looked at what I said is, when we look at the language arts, language arts has these curriculum kinda guides and maps, so we can do a little bit more of that guaranteed curriculum. And overall, as a district, we're scoring above the fiftieth percentile for the grade bands, which fifty is your target, because this is for fiftieth percentile nationwide, fifty is your average. It's what we expect everybody to be achieving, higher rate, lower, we know what we need to work on. When we start looking at math, we're lower than that, and we have quite a bit to go. So, that is kinda one of those things, if we can start kind of guaranteeing what we're teaching and how, and a little bit of some of those other aspects and those kinda standards, to make sure we're getting to that content that really we're striving for, that kinda helps. Does that make sense?
It does.
Is that kinda what I said?
And I know that, being the curriculum chair, this seems like sort of my thing, but I, I didn't wanna answer no, that we're not spending too much time on curriculum development, but I, so I appreciate what you had to say there. And I also wanted to say that I realize, if everybody doesn't realize, that this is a huge task you've been given, and we really appreciate how much work, or I appreciate, and I hope I can speak on behalf of the board, but I'm not supposed to do that, that we appreciate all the effort that you've put into this. And I'm really excited seeing this again, it just makes me feel like, when you get this together, and we have something substantive like that, that you can come to us and say, we've piloted this, we've mapped this, and this is what we need. And I think that would, that'd go a long way for us to say, yes, you've shown us that you've done the data, you've done, we have the data, you've done the research, this is what you need, we'd be hard-pressed to say no to that, because we're supposed to be, again, data-driven. So, I'm really excited for this to get in place, and for us to have that data, so we can say, this isn't just something we want, or we feel is good, or is trendy, or anything like that, we can see the progress that's being made.
And that's kinda why we went through such a, I mean, like I know, when I come before the board, or bring before the board next month, the, the resource request or purchase, that we spent so much time digging in and looking at everything that's out there, to really look at the, the standards that we wanna hit, and making sure that what we're looking at is really gonna be the best for, to hit those standards, but also the best for our students and our teachers. You know, we spent a lot of time with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
All right.
We're not with any motion, are you? No, it was just information.
All right, so we'll move on to middle school cross-country, boys and girls?
Yeah, the middle school is requesting permission to start a cross-country team for the upcoming school year. They have a strong interest from their kids. It is offered within their conference, and they feel it would be a great stepping stone and feeder program to grow that into our kids that are in the cross-country program at the high school. My recommendation would be to approve it. We do not currently have the stipend in our extracurricular coaching, extracurricular stipend schedule, but if the board were to approve it tonight, what I'd like to do is to work that in with our negotiations, negotiation package when we meet with the NVEA tomorrow night, if it's approved by the board.
Is there a baseline for how much interest they have to have to? Is it's one kid?
No, usually it's not one kid, and let's see if I. I don't know, Brenda gave me an exact number, but there was, it was even more than ten kids that I know that were interested in.
Is there a reason we haven't had this in the past, or did we at some point, and it was draft?
No, I think maybe just more interest level than anything.
We've had interesting cross-country for a number of years. I knew of students that I had when I taught that actually went down and ran in Belvedere for, I don't know if it was in the Park District down there, but we've had for a number of years, I mean, those students have sent, I had them in sixth grade, and they've since graduated high school. So, I know we've had a lot of interest for a number of years. I don't know how many are interested now, I just know from historical, you know, what our students have had to do just so they could, you know, do those things.
I think they've just had a gronswall this year of kids interested in doing that.
Bren brings up a good point. Is there some minimum that must be met before any of these programs or opportunities move forward? Or do they just exist no matter how many sign up?
Usually what we have is, we have some stipends agreed upon, too. We don't have to fill them all, but what I would ask the principals is, is when you're bringing requests for them, make sure you've got a format over the group, and I haven't put it out.
Aren't there middle school sports handled through North Boone youth and not the school? Do we stipend any middle school coaches?
Yeah, we do. We have middle school stipend coaches. Some of the, I think the five-six might come through the North Boone youth sports, but we do, we have conference, competition for our middle school. And, and stipend coach stipends.
So, how much do you look at something like this, does it cost? You've got the coaching stipend, but you have busing, you have other things, what's the total?
Meat fees and stuff.
Program cost that you look at?
Gosh, I, I think what Brenda written down there was, is there was a few meets. Does anybody have off the top of their head what a group for stipend coaches? 'Cause that's what we were requesting. I think that's maybe twelve hundred dollars, I'm guessing right now, but if you needed total costs, by the time they put busing and all that other stuff into it, I could bring that back for you, but it would be the June meeting.
In these instances, what usually is the big cost? Is it busing, or is it the coach?
Probably your stipend. They don't need money for uniforms. For the most part, it's a pretty low costing sport. And I think that there was like, maybe six meets that there was offered through the conference and invitationals that they could participate in.
Is there a date we have to approve this by, so that they can still run it next year, or?
I can bring it back in June if you want the cost of it. And I'm more just wondering about how much interest there is.
Yeah, I'd be curious about the number of kids, too. I mean, to approve it for three, four kids, might be.
And is there a formal, or might we consider a formal application for such a thing? And, and yearly, at this time of year, anybody who's interested in, in creating such a thing? Because I'm just wondering, if we approve this, will the pottery enthusiasts at the middle school go? You know, we'd like also to have an opportunity, I'm just wondering if there are any, chess, chess club doesn't exist at the middle school, but the chess people are, are just waiting, and when they find out we did this for cross-country, they're gonna be upset that they didn't have a crack at this also. Could there be some sort of significant application?
That we were discussing in negotiations was putting an extracurricular committee to put together, where you look at the criteria for what you would need to start up a new club. You'd look at the criteria for how they'd be placed on a coaching salary schedule. And then, the other thing is too, is to try not to grow the cost, but to try to say, if you're not using stipends for this, this, and this this year, maybe some of these stipends could be used for, depending on where the, whatever the interest level is. And then have it reviewed each year by athletic directors, administrators, and some NVEA staff.
Matt, is Safe, as a coordinator of Safe, do you get a stipend for that?
No, and I gave it up to other staff who are doing it voluntarily as well.
Okay.
Chess, we have a parent who's identified that volunteer coaches that, too.
Okay. 'Cause I'm just wondering, that, that came to mind, might the Safe coordinator go, you know, I'd like a stipend, as long as we're doing extracurricular stipends, maybe we could have three or four more Safe-like groups. I don't even know how you categorize Safe, but maybe there are, you know, girls empowerment, girl organizations that would, could be extracurricular, and would also, if we gave them twelve hundred dollars for a coordinator plus a few buses, they might go, wow, if this is an opportunity, we'd like to see this.
One of the, one of the things that we had in a previous district with this committee was that you could begin the club with approval from the board at no, you know, with no money, and what they were looking for was for that club to continue one, and depending on whatever the preferred criteria is, one to two years. So, to show that it was gonna be sustainable, so it wasn't a one and done kind of thing, too.
It's kinda what we did with ball.
Do you have a budget, Matt, for Safe, just to use that as an example?
Nope.
So, you have zero, you have to fundraise for anything you wanna do?
Right.
Okay, and would it be wrong of me to assume that, is Safe considered extracurricular?
It is. But extracurriculars usually don't have a budget, except for whatever they fundraise on their own. Like, the district doesn't provide anything.
I may be, I may be wrong here, but it just seems to me that if we have a stipend for cross-country coach, we would also have a stipend for whoever is the Safe coordinator, or any other organization coordinator. And if you wanted to take a trip or two, there'd be some activity funds that's a pool that would be doled out?
Yeah, activity funds, generally in the past haven't existed for that, it's always been the fundraising. I know a few years ago, a lot of the stipends went, I mean, that's why we do a yearbook on our own through volunteers now. And any clubs that we start, like Safe, and we're gonna look at a photography club next year, that is volunteer-based right now.
Would that not be something to consider, though, that they would fall under the same category as extracurricular, and might also be in the consideration for having a stipend and maybe some small budget?
Oh, we, we love it, yeah, because one thing, it does mean that the, or the club, whatever it is, is gonna continue to exist, not be one and done, or two years and done, 'cause that person get, got burnt out because, well, I'm doing all this for free, and I can't do it anymore, I'm not doing it anymore, whatever the case might be.
And I don't mean to diminish the importance of cross-country at all, but it just got me to thinking, do we have other organizations that would love something like this, that just don't ever get considered, and have never thought to ask, and maybe there should be?
We do have a lot of people that are doing some of these clubs of voluntary work.
And that's, cross-country is amazing, but Safe is also pretty amazing also, opportunity for our kids. And maybe if it had a budget, it could be a little cooler, end-of-the-year trip or something like that, it might get some more interest. And I only use Safe as an example, 'cause that's the first thing that came to mind, I'm sure there are lots of others that I'm probably missing.
Yeah, they do quite a few over the years. Like I said, we're looking at adding photography for next year, computer club as well, but, yeah.
Cool. This one isn't as time-sensitive, this is something I could bring you the more information back, and bring it back in June.
When, and I'll say this, I know you said it's not as sensitive. When, I don't even know when the middle school cross-country season is.
I assume it's the fall.
Okay, so it would require some organization of, of meets and all that, you know, that had, she'd have to insert. I, I mean, I understand, I, I agree, we've, I don't know if you know or not, we've got a, due to student interest, we've got a, an engine team, or a new engine team right now, and they're going to the national, you know, they're, they made it to the national competition on their first try-around, things. And so, you know, I, I see that.
With just somebody volunteering their time to lead it, and.
Absolutely.
That, that should be some sort of student activity pool, or extracurricular pool, it seems to me that.
See, this is where if we went back.
It's somehow categorized differently, and I'm not sure how.
'Cause that's another good one, Jake, that you're bringing up, that has a lot of interests, is doing a lot of good things, too.
I think they've done a lot of their own fundraising and gotten sponsorships, too.
And we're, yeah, and we're starting up an account for them to go through, you know, have an official activity account, so we can track funds and things like that. But, you know, as far as a stipend goes, we don't have any kind of stipend for them.
'Cause we'll have some more groups, so, just as time goes on, your interests change, and groups change, and new things come about. So, we have to, when contracts get made, sometimes it's for three years, but it seems like we almost have to have something built in with a little more adaptability to, for kids and kids' interests.
Now, I'm curious, though, and not to belabor this issue, but how have clubs been categorized? How, do we have a policy, or is it just past practice? How has it been that these great opportunities for a group of maybe fifteen or twenty students, or some, somebody who volunteers and has no budget, or it's considered extracurricular and has a stipend, and it's supposed to be through negotiations?
It's supposed to be negotiated through contracts, although there has been some exceptions.
Do they have a coach, either, somebody who's willing to?
Sometimes with that, if you've got somebody that's gonna volunteer, you'll, you'll let some run those groups through volunteer, through board, the board and faculty.
In which case, the negotiating team would need to say, we'd like to see clubs recognized exactly like any other extracurricular sporting activity? We'd like to present these stipends for these different clubs.
The stipends are presented in the different categories.
Is there another way around that? Could it, do, do we collect student fees?
There's usually not another way around it, but. there's been before where there's been things approved that's bound to happen.
So we're going to move that one to next month?
So would you like a little more information back on that?
That one or all of them? Can we have a discussion of how this is?
Just the overall funding of extracurricular activities is?
Yeah.
Right now, it's just done through negotiations.
So Matt and Safe Club is done through negotiations?
There's not a Safe, Safe stipend, is there?
No, so do you want a list for the next meeting?
Only stipend positions, Joe, are negotiated.
Negotiated.
Everything else is volunteers.
Or maybe they waiver a volunteer here and there.
And it stipends our only coaches?
No. Class, some clubs. Class advisors, uh, Spanish club, uh, French club. I mean, there are club, there are clubs, I mean.
But that's all high school.
Well, and that may be correct.
Right, so middle school, there's no.
In the back of the contract, it shows all the stipends that are going to prove through contract negotiations.
Can we, could we consider creating some sort of activity fund? Could it be a line item and each club that gets approved would have some sort of?
I don't think they're going to give much power.
So would ha, a bug would have to be planted in the negotiating team's ear from some advisor that, that this is an opportunity that could be looked into if there was enough interest in it.
And that's why when most of these come up, they do go volunteer for a couple of years. And they get a bug, if there's enough interest, then the union says.
Let the union know this is an active group, please start funding it.
Well, they, they ask for money, say, I'm working too much, not paid.
So Matt, in the, just as again, this example, Matt needs to ask?
Is it still the case that only the stipend sports have the fees associated with participating in them and not the clubs?
Who, uh, that is correct. That is correct. Anything that's a, anything that's a club, um, well, and, and now that I, that I think about it, you, you bring up a great point on things. So like Spanish club, Spanish, Spanish club, um, French club, you know, things like that at the high school. Students are, have to pay ten dollar activity fee to be involved in a club. For athletics, there is a hundred dollar athletic fee that, you know, is assessed to anybody who's involved in athletics. So, you know, there are differences there between that.
So one way around this could be next year, when we do the fees, we could decide to tack on a one dollar activity fee to every student. I just made that up. And then create some sort of accounts through which, or it could be done through contracts, although that sounds onerous and cumbersome. Is there not a precedent at some schools to have a student activity fee?
Activity pool.
And then it becomes a pool of money that every club gets to request from?
A lot of the money's already spoken for.
I think I've heard of stuff like that with PTOs.
PTOs sometimes, that's a good point. Sometimes PTO will help some of those startups.
I've seen that happen at some elementaries. They have so much money and then they go through their principal saying, I want to do this club for this year. You know, and they guarantee it's going to run for three years, but whatever.
Sometimes they start those volunteer clubs or those volunteer organizations out to fundraise or go around to do things like that.
It seems that some of our extracurricular sporting opportunities would, are equal to many of our other club opportunities, so that that would be something we would look into.
But then they, you know, there's also IHSA, which kind of sets a standard for athletics. Clubs, there's no standard, so anyone could potentially start a club and ask for money without there being any rigor to it. So you'd, you'd have some guidelines to go with it too. I mean, it's, it's absolutely a good thing to look into, but there's a lot more than just.
Could we get a, I'd be interested in seeing a list. Can we get a list of what, besides Safe? Cause I keep using Safe as the example. How many clubs are there? Engine Club? How many clubs are there? And this is something perhaps we should look into.
What, Cupcake Club?
Yeah, that wasn't really a club per se, more like an opportunity.
Right, but I know. Are you talking about what's outside the contract?
We visit the Cupcake Club?
Outside the contract.
Could we have a presentation by the middle school? Am I making my point okay here that, that I think cross-country and all the stipends we have are, are great, but it's just dawning on me that there might be lots of other opportunities like Safe or lots of clubs that have these volunteers, people who are volunteering. And it, I'd be, it seems to me I'd be more inclined to be a coach of some sort and get a stipend than I would be a club, but I might have more passion for one of the clubs that could be, could do some amazing things, like leads an engine group to, to some great things.
And, and like there are differences, you know, and I think the reason why certain things like French club and Spanish club are much lower, is if you think about it, they meet maybe once a month, where to, if you're a coach, you coach for, you know, you're coaching practice for three hours, you know, six days a week or more at a, you know, at a game.
Kind of a time commitment.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a lot more time commitment to the coaching aspect of things than there is to the clubs. Both absolutely have their value, but the amount of time you put into it, and, and that might, you know, be the significant difference between pay and the stipends.
Okay, we, since you just mentioned it, we might also have stipend club advisors. Do we have a Model UN and a Science Olympiad? And, cause I know at the college, those are actually in our contract, the Model UN, Phi Theta Kappa, or the Honor Society. Science Olympiad are all actually.
We have Science Olympiad.
We have a stipend.
We have a math stipend.
Okay.
In the back of the contract.
So we do have for some of the more nationally known clubs.
But like the one that, I mean, your daughter did one this year. It wasn't Model UN, it was.
Yeah, it was Model.
It, was it Model UN?
Model UN sub somehow, less than Model U. It wasn't technically Model UN, but it was Model UN.
Correct, yeah, and Rob Ulrich has volunteered now for the last two years doing that one.
And he's probably hasn't taken it to the next level that I'm like, talked about sub Model UN. He probably hasn't taken it to Model UN because it, I'm sure there are, you have to meet this often and you have to attend this many, many events. And he's not probably going to do that unless there's something there.
Correct. All right, I think we have enough for next month, so we can move on to.
Does Brenda have somebody ready to go if we kicked us down the road?
That I don't know for a coach, you mean? I don't know. She does? Thanks, Matt.
Sorry.
So I'll bring that back in June.
Okay.
Are we, was Molly's, or Molly's presentation not to go over the maps stuff that was in the board packet?
I was asked just to bring the curriculum thing, so the data's there for you. Did you have questions on it, Ed?
Go ahead.
Do you want to see maps at the next meeting, Ed?
Well, we can't make next meeting. We talk to the Ed, we'll see what we can do, so we can go over the map results with you.
It definitely looked like we had a lot of room for improvement.
Well, and I think, can I add into that?
Sure, go ahead.
Cause I know Matt, Ed's going to, you know, look at what's there and as well others. And I know, um, Mike and I just talked about that getting together with the different kind of cohorts of people hopefully, and setting building level goals based on our maps data, so we can really dive into those. So we will be, you know, there is a lot of room for growth. And, you know, at the meeting, we discussed some different possibilities on theories on why, you know, maybe the scores were lower, but there's still quite a bit of room for growth. And so, um, we're hoping to kind of get together and do some kind of goal setting and looking at what areas are we low in, so we can start looking at some school improvement.
Break it down into the contracts.
To really grow those areas, but beyond growing the curriculum side of things and aligning that. But what other items can we do within our buildings?
And this has now got to work itself back into our school improvement plans. So last fall, we set school improvement plans. We looked at spring to spring growth. Principals and I discussed student outcomes in December and where we were at. Now that we've got the springs done here in June, what Molly and I will do is we'll sit down with each of the principal groups for their, uh, different grade levels and then talk about what strengths, weaknesses. And then over the summer, their next task is, is to start to formulate plans and then work with the school improvement team to adjust the plan and re-target, re, uh, refocus in on improvement for next school year and redevelop their school improvement plan for them.
I think that might, you know, just that kind of bits of information might help as you start looking through things. You're like, there's going to be some times you look through and like, oh, just know we're, we're very aware and we're working on that.
Not that the curriculum being more cohesive is going to be a panacea or solve everything. But it will eliminate a lot of possible dependent variables in trying to figure out what's going on.
Right.
Yes, okay. Right now, we could only assume what all the reasons are for those maps results. At least when we have something more structured.
It's going to take out one of your variables. You know, when we are all teaching that, that guaranteed curriculum, it'll take out that variable of, oh, this teacher didn't get to this part and, or this part or this part. That's the part where we're saying, no, we're all teaching that. Now what are we missing? You know, so that kind of removes that variable to, or minimizes the variable a little more. I will forewarn you though, sometimes when you do implement new curriculums, you do see a dip in scores for up to two years. I'm going to warn you on that one, but we're, we're going to work hard not to be there.
Ed or any of the board members, if you'd like to go over the data, we'd be more than happy to go over with you.
All right, we'll move on to technology, smart board repair.
Yeah, in your board packet, um, is the motion to approve the items for repairing and replacing some of our current smart board issues. We have several of them that are getting up during age. And this quote is to report, repair and replace what we have. Many are getting dated and need some service, so we wanted to get the best pricing we could and that's what I had Jerry do. And that reflects that, so I'm asking the board to approve the expenditure for twenty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars for us to repair and replace some of our dated and broken smart, smart boards.
Was there other bids besides the twenty-two nine?
Uh, Jerry did work with a whole bunch of people to try to get the best pricing possible there. And what was it, Epsom's brighter futures program was the one that came back. He was working with several vendors for pricing.
And we had this discussion before, I believe, but just for the benefit of everybody, we, we're also looking into, will smart boards go away in a couple of years and what is down the road? That, that, all of that's being considered.
They're, they're really used a lot though right now.
How long is the warranty on these?
Gosh, I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
My question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll take it back.
Probably not more than.
A year or two?
One year.
Yeah.
I would think all that should have been negotiated with a price for that reason. There should be more than one vendor listed here. This is twenty-two thousand dollars. Maybe Jerry did, maybe he didn't, but if he did, we should see the numbers.
The motion hasn't been made.
What's the lead time on having these for next year?
Yeah, one of the reasons they wanted to get moving on them was so that they could get a bunch of these done, replaced, and then they have to have some of the techs come in to help install some of them. It'll take some time. They, they wanted to have this summer to get it done.
I'll move, we approve the technology repair replacement expenditures and then.
I would like to add just a little more to the discussion to Tom's point down there. And this is now on, I feel this is an action item on me that you've offered to, you know, to meet with us on different things as we get up to speed. But I know the technology purchase we had last month, when I was looking at, um, like options that we had, it didn't look to me when I really got to, to view in it that it was an apples and apples, that vendors had substituted some stuff out, had used or refurbished pieces. And so when you were looking at the prices, it wasn't the same to me. There's things with warranty as well that I would kind of look at. One of the things as I look at this that I would like to see is, we have, you know, make up a number here, fifty smart boards in-house. We think technology-wise, we're looking at about a seven-year run on them. These look like you got to nine, which seems phenomenal. But kind of get for me, an overall picture of where we're at. And so I would share, if I had been on here maybe another three or four months and this was the amount of information I'm given, I would share Tom's concerns.
Sure.
I'm wanting to see a lot more overview, not just this, but kind of everything, because, um, I, it does seem a little light on the, on the backend documentation and kind of what we're looking at. But at this point, I haven't had an opportunity to do that. I don't, um, I understand there's schedules you're trying to get for replacements, so I'm willing to go with what we have. But I do think, I'll try to be setting something up to try to just get a better understanding of where we're at.
Like I said, we're not trying to jam down the board's throat or playing the games. We're trying to get the best deals we can too. So if the board would prefer that I push it back to June, I can push it back to June. Have Jerry and Randy come here and speak to what they, uh, what they're asking for and have more detail for you. I wouldn't be able to speak to it in specifics the way that they can though. You know what I mean? With the, with the detail of the, the equipment. They just know it so much better inside and out than I do.
There's a motion, but no second, so it's going to die. And we can just put it out for a month if nobody wants to second it.
Any further motions? And that one will die on the floor.
Do we make a motion to revisit it a month?
We'll revisit it a month.
But that doesn't need to be a motion.
Then we settle.
All right, moving on to item G, coaching? Off the consent.
Pardon?
The last item in new business is the one you pulled off, the consent agenda.
Without going into specifics about specific people, this is, there's a lot of coaching positions on here. So I guess, um, before we, before I won, before I voted on hiring new people, I guess, an explanation about why we're turning over so much coaching staff and the process by which we came to, uh, to hire the people that we did here, was there considerations for trying to get people who had some experience building programs back? Bring some of the credibility back to a couple of these programs? Were there considerations to piggybacking some of these coaching positions with teaching positions?
Are we asking about, so coaching positions were, as far as the coaching positions go, any decisions that were made on past coaches were stuff that we had discussions about prior season with coaches for things that we needed to see happen. We made, we had discussion on certain things. So when we ended up going through then with this, um, with, you know, hiring, one of the things that we did do was we looked to see, um, you know, what we had in a pool of candidates to also see what went along with coaching. You know, see, see, one of the big things is, you know, it's nice to have somebody in the building. Anybody who, who coaches will tell you it's nice to, you know, to be in the building on things and see who had certifications and whatnot. And so, um, you know, there were different certifications were made. I, I can tell you that through, um, through some of the, one of the big things of interest was PE and what we would get through PE with PE. Cause most of the time what you'll find is PE coaches, uh, people who are PE, people who are involved in physical education typically end up wanting, are wanting to coach as well. So we were wanting to get those done out of the way and we're trying to see what we had available to us at that point in time through, through those. Through those and we didn't end up having any candidates, um, for our head coaching positions that we found that would, you know, that were closer in the area. I, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, in a roundabout way, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I, I mean, we were trying to see if we, we were. Yeah, so, I, I mean, we were trying to see if we, we were able to find some candidates who were, we were trying to see if we could find some candidates for our teaching positions who are also interested in coaching, because, you know, it is good to have, you know, those coaches in the building and see what kind of quality of coaches we could get through the, the teaching experience on things. One of the things, you know, we, we just weren't able to get the, you know, find some of those head coaches through the hiring of that. I mean, our recommendation, you know, our, our recommendation for the PE position, you know, wasn't somebody who was interested in any of our, any of our head coaching positions, and so that didn't work out in that aspect of things. And then through some of the other positions, you know, we didn't find somebody that would fit that head coach spot. So then, you know, seeing that, and so he sat in on, on some of those interviews as well, you know, for some people who had indicated coaching stuff, and then after that, he held some, he also held some other interviews, and then he made his recommendations for the coaching positions.
Always nice when we have staff that's able to help coach too.
What's that?
Always nice when we have staff that's able to do the coaching too, that helps hold.
And the contract is even.
A quick Google search of a couple of these names, I mean, they've been a lot of places for three or four years and gone to other places, and you, you know, as you talk about building programs back up to where they need to be, I don't know, without getting into specifics.
Coaching positions?
Without getting into specifics about people, it's not really the issue. I just wanted to understand the process, why we, why we have so many head coaching jobs on here, why there's still resignations from other people on this list.
We only had two head coaching positions open, didn't we, this year?
We got a head boy soccer, two assistant footballs, a head varsity boys basketball, freshman football, sophomore boys basketball, head varsity wrestling.
You said.
Freshman, freshman football coach, and sophomore basket, boys basketball coach, and an assistant girl soccer coach.
Sure. And, and I know you said head positions, and so I, I guess for soccer, you know, as far as wrestling and, and basketball, you know, those, those are open, you know, there had been discussion ahead of time on that with previous coaches on that.
So do we have a motion?
Ed, Ed, when you pulled it, was it just the coaching that you pulled off the personnel? So the rest of the personnel is okay, what we need to approve is the coaching on the personnel agenda. That's what we need a, a mo, a motion for.
I thought we approved everything but the coaching in the consent, in the consent agenda, right?
Yeah.
So this is only.
I make, I make a motion to approve line seven of the extracurricular hire, which includes eight coaches for the high school.
Motion.
Second.
Second? Roll. Thank you for the discussion.
Yeah. Ed, in the end, you didn't necessarily want these not, not approved, but just that the protocol be looked at closely? Did you have glaring concerns? I guess we're not supposed to discuss individuals.
I got my questions answered.
Roll call.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan?
No.
Mr. Elxon?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
All right, so we'll move back to unfinished business.
Can I, just one thing related to the, the coaches? And again, this is me getting up to speed with things, but we have had a shift. I think we talked about this maybe in regards to this next topic, is that sometimes you get to a place and you're not quite sure the history of how you got here. And one of the things related to this is, my prior stint on here is, we had, at the beginning of my board tenure, we had a dedicated AD, and then we made a decision to split or take that position, make a person an assistant principal, bring in another assistant principal, and then it evolved into something else. And this is again, one of the things that I would like to sit down, because I, is that, since this is kind of tied into this whole process, is that how that position is, or is this something that would be better talked offline to kind of understand?
I've got something based out of negotiations that I'll talk to about.
Okay.
The ADs.
Okay.
Because it does play a part of that, I think.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, second reading and approval of policy.
It was just six, colon, three, ten, which we approved the first reading at our last meeting. We're bringing this one back for the second reading to be approved before it goes to the policy.
We have a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll move if we approve the second reading.
Motion to approve? Second?
Well, second.
Second? Discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I've got a lot to say about this, clearly. So, where, where are we at? We are, where we are at now, months later, after numerous meetings that have been called and on this issue. And I just wanted to share that I, I guess I'm a little concerned that, that maybe we need to think carefully about the whole process, how we go about this. I've been charged on a number of occasions to take this back to committee. I've met, I think Jake, you're at every one of them also. We've met four or five meetings. I can't say that there was ever a unanimous vote on anything. No votes, some of these were subcommittees that, that really weren't meant to bring forth a recommendation. But I, I think it's fair to say at most of those committees, we, we said just move, move this forward without limiting it. I think that, I think that's fair to say, although there was a lot of discussion to not do so. I felt fair, so confident that we weren't going to limit it, that I didn't go to the policy meeting, unfortunately, at which it was presented to the board, because after all these subcommittees, it then went to policy. Before it went to policy, I asked everybody to unofficially vote how they would like to see this, and I think we did have unanimous vote there, that we would not limit, put any limits on this. It then went to policy and had the limits put on. And so I hope you guys understand a bit of my frustration. Having attended all those sub, all, all those subcommittee meetings were really pointless. We should have just had one policy committee meeting, at which it could have been presented why we should or shouldn't limit it. So I'm a little frustrated at the process. I feel, having attended all those committee meetings, that, I feel confident in saying that, that no limits, that the groups that met didn't unanimously, or that there was consensus not to limit that. I feel that the, at some point, at one point in time, when the board said, we don't want to see it limited in general, I felt confident that it would go to policy and it would not be limited. It did, it went to policy and was limited. And I've heard some people say that they just want this to be done with, and just take a vote on this and be done with. And that, that sort of just, I'm a little disheartened to hear that, because I've been neck-deep in this policy and all the things that go on with it, and I've got a kid in the program, so I've been watching it very closely, watching what, how Rock Valley handles it, watching how North Boone handles it. Having said that, that I'm a little concerned about and a little frustrated with how this fell through, limiting it as we have stated is not any huge concern to me. So I, I didn't want to see it limited. I felt that the committees didn't want to see it limited. It went to policy and then was discussed at board, and in the policy minutes, there's only mention of why we should limit it. There's no mention of why we shouldn't limit it in the policy meeting notes. We now have a couple lawyers who have chimed in, and I think as a board, that speaks a lot to us, that we shouldn't ever go against what any lawyers have said. But that's still kind of frustrating, because we spent a lot of time in committee discussing the pros and cons, and I wish this wouldn't have unfolded the way it did.
Could I offer out one thing, Joe? I, I know, there's one thing that I, I, has recently been brought to me, and I sent an email to Dr. Greenlee the other day, and, and it might shed a little bit of light. And after this came up, I thought, oh, this may not be such a bad thing, saying at least 12 credits. I have a parent who ended up asking me if we accept homeschool, can homeschool students come to North Boone part-time? And I said, well, we've allowed it for, we, we have allowed it for driver's education. I said, let me do a little more checking. I, I said, do you mind if I ask what you're interested in? And the parent mentioned driver's education, math, because they've come to their ends for their means of teaching math, and, you know, some other extracurriculars. And so I said, let me, let me do some checking in on some things and get back to you. So I found policy, seven forty, a current, current policy of ours. The district accepts non-public school students, including parochial and homeschooled students who live within the district for part-time attendance in the district's regular education program on spec, on space-available basis. Requests for part-time attendance must be submitted to the building principal by this date, as, you know, and, and they talk about how there's a prorated fee and whatnot. So.
I think I see where you're going with that.
Hearing this now, I, and, and I, I, I mean, it was a week ago, literally a week ago, or it was this week, I, I guess, I don't know, last thing.
Tail end of last week.
I don't know when I sent it to you. It was, it was within the week I sent it. And, you, you know, I, I think now, boy, what if a, a student is here part-time and does part-time, and, and the parent says, well, I'm teaching them all honors classes at home. You know, and then that student then makes a full immersion into school their senior year and their valedictorian, and, you know, which could quite possibly be, you know, a possibility on things. Now, had I never got that phone call, I'm not gonna lie, I would not have looked over policy seven dash forty. But, yeah, it came up, it came up within the week, and I had to ask Mike about it. So I, I don't know if that will help out a lot. I agree, we put in a ton of hours to this and, you know, the consensus on things, but this is.
But I'm actually kind of confused with what you just said, because doesn't that policy state that a homeschool kid could come and take any number of classes all four years? And not, and maybe take fewer, wait, take more than 12 of their classes at their, at home, or wherever they're taking them, which would then conflict with what we're about to, or what at least has been presented as six, colon, three, ten? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it would, it would, it would mean that there would be, here's the one thing that I will say, I think we have the right to accept credits based off of an evaluation of the courses that are taken as well, you know, on things. But it is something that I, you know, I start to look on here, and I, and I was like, wow, this.
Or are you, or are you presenting that as a need for us to actually restrict the number of courses we take?
You know, to say that in order to be valid, you know, in, in order to be, to graduate with a North Boone High School diploma, you at least have to, you know, attend it, you know, here for.
The minimum.
Credit, the minimum of 12 credits. And that's basically what we're saying. The other way leaves it even completely more open on things.
I just wish everybody could have attended all those meetings, because what keeps happening, am I right, Jake, and even happened with the lawyer at the last meeting? He started blending six, three, ten, and six, three, oh. He started talking about valedictorian, because valedictorian and, and grade calculation muddies this discussion. It makes it more complicated and muddies it, and if we just focused to six, colon, three, ten, it would take out any of the, those discussions of who might weasel their way into valedictorian, which does get people's ear, you know, get some listening weight. What, what could possibly happen?
Yeah.
I, I still think there's a lot of confusion about what we're even voting on, and I don't even know where we go with this, because once we all start attending all those meetings again, where all this discussion gets hashed out. I, Jake, if I may, at those meetings, and especially one in particular, where we had all the parents over at the high school. Most of the parents said, we should limit this, we don't want some homeschooler to come in, or we don't want these worst-case scenarios to occur. But at the end of that, and it was a long meeting, everybody went, why are we trying to look at every possible permutation of this? If, if they want to take dual-credit classes, if they want to take these classes and bring them in, and if they still really want a North Boone diploma, why wouldn't we do that? Because if we sit and look at every permutation, you're gonna go crazy, and you're gonna go just as crazy as you do every year when you have to calculate who's the valedictorian. What do we accept? What don't we accept? What's beyond the limit? What is acceptable? It is gonna become just as much of a nightmare for you as calculating who's valedictorian, which are really two separate policies.
Correct.
And they keep getting muddied, and I, when the lawyer spoke, I didn't want to trump the lawyer or say anything, but I thought, wait, he's blending, he's blending two different policies together.
Yeah, I don't, and I won't go into any more of the dark discussion.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna start from just going there again.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment on how I'm gonna, or plan on voting on this. Sitting in the audience back in February, when, whatever, just three discussions or so ago, it was my observation in watching the group discuss it, that this was something that, and I think it ought to be few and far things between, few and far things in between it, that it seemed something that the board had, and really didn't seem like necessarily it should go down to committee. And one of the things that I look at is, when you empower a committee to, to ask for their advice, that ought to be the thing that you do, but in those cases where the board feels they want to hold on to that decision and have it, it didn't even in February seem like it necessarily should have went down to that. It should have just been hammered out in a, maybe a special meeting. With that being said, I do feel for me, coming in here, this is something that I, and I want to be cautious in this, because, and even though it doesn't affect, you know, how you calculate who's number one and number two in the class, I, I, to me, I don't consider myself. I don't know if the way that it's done so far is how I would have done it if I was on the board, and for me to step in and then having a junior that's affected by it next year, I really don't think, I guess I, I'm gonna end up abstaining from the vote, and it's for those couple of reasons. I don't want to step on a decision that is kind of the, the previous board's decision, and I don't want to, I, I don't know, I just, it's one of those things, I don't know if I would do it very often, but I just don't feel like it's something that I want to get into at this late in the game. You've had a first reading on it, you guys have made interpretations of what the committee does and doesn't do, and, and things about even modifying, you know, press and things, and I, and I think they're all good points. I think everyone's made good ones. I think it sounds like you've had really good community input on it. And it ought to get, I'm assuming it'd get decided, and then we'll get revisited, I think, the next time press changes. But I, I guess that's where I'm at on it. I, it, yeah, I usually have a lot of opinions on things, and I'm not shy to say it, but I think in this one, I need, for myself, I need to step back from it and just see how, how things go with it.
Tommy bring up a good point, and, and part of my frustration also, that I have been at all those meetings, and I, I felt so confident in what the committee had sent forward, that I didn't go to the policy meeting where it was changed to what it is today. But Ed's point about, it seems like the argument has been made in the past, that if press presents it, we should stick with it. it, we should stick with it. I also thought, well, presses suggested that we not put limits on it, we won't put limits on it. And then it came out of policy that we will limit it. And again, for the reasons that we heard, and I don't want to rehash the reasons why we shouldn't put limits on it, but I'm going to vote no to this also. I wanted to make this clear, just because I feel that I was sent to those committees and I feel that the committees felt we shouldn't put any limits on this. So I'm gonna be voting no on this also because the recommendation is to set it at 12, which does put limits on it. But also, as is the case at the end of lots of our policies, there's the little clause in there that says the superintendent or some.
Designee.
Designee gets to approve all of that. So I believe if this gets onerous or out of hand, we either revisit it or our superintendent or designee make the limits that they see necessary.
So the superintendent can adjust this policy as needed?
Let's have some bad spot.
So that leaves some, some leeway for an individual student.
Right, which does put them at, at making that call. So it, and if that's an uncomfortable spot, then I think we need to look seriously at the whole policy manual because the policy manual is full of places where it says the superintendent or designee may make special considerations. And if we don't like to be in that position, then I think I have a whole slew of policies to go back through and take that out if that makes us uncomfortable.
Are you comfortable making those decisions, Mike?
Those are tough. I mean, we fall back on policy handbook and law. I mean, that's gonna be tough on us. I, you know, until you see the exact situation, I, I don't know.
I guess I'll put it to you this way. So if the handbook says appropriate, somebody wears appropriate, appropriate clothing to school, and then you say that's inappropriate, and somebody else said, nope, I let my kid leave this morning, that, that's appropriate. No, it's not. That's inappropriate. You know, and then you're down to judgment call on things. And, you know, typically, you try to then, and this is, this is wording that has left a bad taste in people's mouth and path, past when you say past practice. Now, we say past practice, well, it's not really published what past practice is, you know, and then, you know, it ends up, you know, even though it's what you've done before, it's not in writing and you didn't, you know, you don't know, people don't know that that's what you've done before. You know, I, I think that's one of the things that we've asked. I, I mean, shoot, mollyballed it up, when we first started discussing this a long time ago, both currently in Harlem, adopted, adopted it as-is. And what they said is, but if we offer it, we're not gonna let you go outside to get a credit in it. So.
They still limited it.
Yeah, they still limited it. Now, did they put that in writing? No. It's nowhere in their policy. Can you find that in writing? But that's.
Their administrative procedure.
That, that's the procedure that they, they follow on this. So, so this is where, this is where, now, could some other school say it's wide open to you, you know, that here it is, we went ahead and adopted, it's wide open to you? Yeah, they could do that. But I know that there are schools who've said, yep, we've, we've adopted as-is, we're only gonna accept it if, if we don't offer it here. And then you decide to take it out somewhere else. Welcome, welcome to school law.
See, we're, we're putting at least these two in that position though, Jake, of now voting on something, which quite frankly, no insult to you guys though, is just been discussed, you've read it now and you, we've discussed these couple possibilities and it's, it's complex, as you know, in, in sitting through all those meetings.
Yeah.
And I don't know what we do with that because I think actually the board, a lot of our board decisions come down to that, to something just being thrown at us. And we've read a little, a little bit blurb about them and we hear a presentation on it, but we don't fully understand it.
You're, you're not gonna, you're not gonna find any specific ruling on, it's like with, until something goes to court and then there's case law on something, there's, the legislators pass a law and then there's interpretation of that law that's out there. Oh, we think we gave you something that's pretty cut and dry. Well, somebody found some kind of loophole and then it goes to court and they make a decision on this. And so, I mean, no matter what, even if you've been, you know, on the board now for, you know, several years, you're, you're still gonna run into that same thing until it goes to, you know, until the court or some kind of ruling on it, that way, shape, or form. But I don't want to be that person that goes to court.
Have you had any students wanting to take more than 12 credit hours at an outside facility? Or is this a?
If I could do this all over again, this would all be like on some easy-to-understand slide and I almost did it myself. And then I thought, no, do I need to do that? But it, it should be done. If we're gonna limit anything, we should limit running start. There are way more students involved in running start, taking way more credit hours in running start. And we're not even discussing that, discussing dual-credit, because running start falls under different auspices. Which again, it does not make any sense to me. And part of the reason why I'm sort of entrenched where I am is because, wait, if we're gonna limit anything and if the teachers are worried about losing jobs, it would be losing jobs over running start, which we already raised the requirements to get into running start. So there will be fewer students going to it. We made it more dangerous for them to jump into and then perhaps jump out of without some consequences.
Correct.
And this, as press presented it, there's still that clause at the end that if the superintendent or a designee can make.
Press, I thought there was an amendment to press.
If we were to.
What has been presented and is on, is a motion right now would be to limit this to 12.
To approve it to 12.
Press.
If we were to deny this proposal, you'd probably, correct me if I'm wrong, you'd go back to what the current policy is, which is three.
No.
Six.
Or six, excuse me.
Three-credit, six classes.
Three-credit, six classes.
But this, my next recommendation would go to be with, would be to go with what press suggested to us, which puts no limits on it at all.
You can't go back to the original policy, right? Because press would have had some changes due to state law or due to court decisions. So it, you can't really go back to the old one. You'd have, there would have to be a proposal to go to the.
Current press.
The current press to get us in compliance with law. I would think you would.
Just so we're clear, what, what I have, the motion is, and what I made a motion for was to not accept what press has recommended, which is accept any classes that students want to take off, for lack of a better way of summarizing that. They went to policy and they said, no, we're gonna limit it to 12, 12 credits. And that's, I don't, after all the committees' meetings, I don't think that was, would have, would have been what we would want it press, or the policy committee to propose. But the policy committee has proposed setting the limit to 12 credits.
So your motion is to revert back to the recommendation that press gave us?
No, so that we could even have a discussion. I went ahead and recommended that we accept what policy presented to us. But I'm gonna vote no against it. And then my next, after it fails, if it fails, my recommendation would be to go with what press has recommended, the most recent press recommendation. If it fails. Which is how that had to be done. Yes?
You would have to go back to first reading then. You'd have to go back to the policy committee. Or if the policy committee brings it forward, they bring it forward for the first reading and then you give a second, you give a next one. Or, excuse me, first reading, next meeting, second reading.
At the last meeting, we approved it though, I think. I can't speak for everybody just because it was the first and to get it moving forward and have opened that discussion.
No, it has to be approved twice.
Right.
It has to be approved, right?
It's been approved once.
It's been approved once. So if it fails here, then we start over.
What was that vote, Kelly, please? Do you have it?
The vote of the new committee?
I believe everybody but myself voted that we would approve it.
I think.
I think you and Ed.
Ed declined too.
Oh.
But I think everyone else said we should move it to.
That's true.
That's true.
I didn't think we should even, having two new people on it, I thought we should get, bring them up to speed. But that is belaboring it and it would take.
We voted on it with the old board. We voted on it with, with the old board.
No.
Yeah, it was with the old board.
That was with the old board.
Though we had voted on it right before you guys received it. That's why I was looking, she was sitting in the room. I said, let's wait to bring you guys on board before we vote on it.
And it's tough about Mary here. One, she is the policy chair.
Well, she just became though.
So if this fails, we can't then make a motion to accept the press, the first reading of the press policy as stated?
My guess is that she would make a motion to bring back the press version for next meeting as a first reading, right? Because wouldn't you guys want to reread it before you vote on it? Or you just go on?
No.
I don't either. I don't either.
Well, we have two new members that were abstaining.
Or one that doesn't. Did we have a second on Joe's motion?
Yes, it did.
Well, nice. We gotta have a vote on it anyways. So you gotta, you gotta vote there. So, roll call.
Mr. Mahal?
Voting on whether to approve the second reading of the policy as presented? No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hues?
Yes.
Mr. Harrow?
No.
Mr. Kinsel?
Abstain.
Mr. Mahal?
No. I, I say no because I still see no one qualified on the policy committee to override press's recommendation.
The lawyer was here at the last meeting and he did speak to it.
Sounds like he mixed policies clearly, according to Joe. So.
Not everyone felt it was that way. He did bring in.
Well, then why, why do we have press? Why are we paying press and a lawyer?
Because the lawyer has to defend press.
Obviously, he didn't.
Except there are other things we disagree with press on, where we have our own stuff built in. Do you have a direction you want to go next? Because that failed.
I would have made a motion that we accept press's recommendation. But you want to wait till the next meeting?
Whatever you want to do. I don't, I don't need to read it again. I know that.
No.
Whatever the board.
The press's recommendation is just minus red ink here, basically.
Scroll all the way up.
Because I've read this a couple of different ways throughout the last few months. But these are the major changes they're doing through.
I don't know what to tell you, actually, because I'm still a little befuddled on how we insert our comments. Is policy committee's comments in red and underlined there? Because I believe that.
I believe that's a rewrite.
That's the memory test, but they've changed from the press.
Could be from us or it could be from press.
Well, I know that the minimum of 12 North Boone credits is needed for a high school student.
That's us.
That's our policy committee. But then, if red and underlined is our policy committee, then everything red and underlined should be our policy committee's suggestions. And I'm not sure that's, I don't think that's the case.
That's how I was reading it when I was reading.
And I think the other section, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they credited from the North Central Association of College and secondary schools, was it?
That's, that's ours also.
That's ours.
Yeah.
This is, this is not the one that was sent by press in any way, shape, or form.
No, this is not press.
Okay. So this is, but this is presses and anything in red has been added by policy.
So the, the dark is what was there before. If it takes anything out, then it puts a red strike through it. Like when, when they present policy to pass through the board. And, and you can see it when, on the one that press ended up having too, because they'll have something similar where it will show a strike through whatever they want to take out. And then anything new that they add is red and anything in, in black is what was there before. So from our past, our past six, three-ten, you know, the one that, that is currently in place, not presses, not this one, the black is what we had before, the red are the proposed changes. And there was nothing, it doesn't look to me like in that there's anything that's actually struck out from the past one. Where too, if you see the one that's by press, almost everything is struck out and there's a red paragraph.
The past press policy had lots of extra details and you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this. And they struck almost everything out and just said, you can take these classes, these extra classes, this extra course.
Right. Before I'd vote on it, I'd want to see the actual press truth.
Yeah.
So if we go straight press also, then we'd actually adopt a drug testing policy. That's about $30,000 if we go straight press.
In six, colon, three-ten?
No, but if, if we're gonna say only press, that'd be all policy. I believe you really want to review each one. That's what I'm saying. If you're saying the merit is we're just gonna always follow press, then we should adopt this drug policy for $30,000.
Well, I guess, not to speak for him, but he's walking back. I, I think his thinking when he mentioned that before is that we, it has at least on one occasion been brought to us, a press recommendation that we didn't necessarily approve with, but we were cautioned not to veer from it because it was presses recommendation. So I know I at least feel like it's been used once before, that we shouldn't insert any of our own wording because then we're veering from what the professionals have said we, we do. So I thought that's how it was gonna go again here. But now we're saying, let's veer from what the professionals say we do. And so if that's gonna be the case, and we can veer from press, I'm okay with that. But for the next two years, everybody's heard that except Mary, we can veer from press. But I don't think we're gonna want to do that much.
Like I said, but do we want this expensive drug testing policy that press?
But that, you're muddying the waters.
That's not on the agenda.
No, this is the basis of your argument, that we shouldn't differ from press. And I'm saying, we have differed from press. There are situations you can't, so don't just, we can't just say we want to always agree with press. Because there are instances where we do differ. And so if your, your argument is you don't like these words and you want them differently, that's fine.
I understand your argument, but I know at least one time, it was, something was presented to us and we were told, this is what press recommend, remend. And we wanted to say, wait a minute, we're not sure we should do this. But it was sort of settled. Then you're, we risk lawsuits because this is what press has presented to us. And we went, okay, well, they're the experts. And since that was used before, we're just kind of carrying over that same logic. But if we want to all agree, and that's fine.
I don't think that.
But we don't necessarily always follow press. I'm okay with that. And this drug testing thing, we can look at the cost of it.
I just think, yeah, press, every district in the state's not exactly the same. Sometimes you'll have individual instances that pop up that you need to add wording to press to just.
Agree.
So if you don't like the words, I'm okay with, you know, you saying, I don't like this. But just to say, I want to follow press, that's where I'm, I'm a disagreement. So I'm not trying to muddy the waters at all. You could recommend that we just bring it back, the presses version at next meeting for.
First reading.
Without any incentive.
Yes.
I don't know if the committee wants.
Yeah, I'd like to. I'd definitely want to read through it.
And in the meantime, Brian, you'll want to look at, wait, no, the newest version of press will be the old version with a bunch of strikeouts in it. And there won't be any red because I believe red, Kelly, is our policy committee's inserts.
It's underscored. The strike through, it's what takes the current policy and the press's policy and overlay it. So the change is ours will have the red underscore, theirs will have the strike. We didn't have what they.
So this isn't a representation of the current press release. It's just our.
The next press version you see is gonna have a lot of strike through.
Okay.
But I actually think this is the newest version of press with all the strike through removed.
Correct.
I would agree. Plus a little bit of.
This is our.
Our wording.
Okay, yeah.
Because it's very short, is it? It's like a page and a half.
Yeah, it's like a page and a half.
The other six, colon, three-ten is like five or six pages long.
Very, very.
I think they have already gotten rid of all of presses' strike throughs. Yes.
We'd like to see it. We currently had versus presses version from October of 16 when this first thing out. about the policy that we had in place in October, and then press's version from October of 16 overlaid, and then there are those strikeouts.
Can I ask, would this, is this more appropriate to be done at a policy meeting? Discuss it policy and then brought to us, or do we discuss it and then send it to policy, because that's probably what's going to happen, right?
It's your call, I mean, I don't know if policy needs to review it again, what more would you need to hear from policy?
I'm on policy, and I don't want to meet again, just in no seriousness.
Right, I understand. I guess it would be useful for us to see the newest policy from press, which will have strike through in it. Because this is.
And I maybe spoke too early, because I don't know what they would feel they need for information, because they'll be the two that are voting on it.
In seeing the newest press recommendations, you will see the old one with all kinds of strike through, and you will see that, like, three-quarters of it has been stricken. Right? We'd only really need to see one, because that will be, we'll see the old one, and the newest version of it will be only the stuff that has been struck through. And at that meeting, we will then vote.
Whatever you recommend, or whatever you're making a motion for, as a first reading. I think, do we need a motion to do that? No, you can just pray up for first reading, just drag them to ground in the process. Put it in the back of the.
All right, so. Then we're moving on, we have a motion for executive session for the employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, and still inhering testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body due to determined validity, or like of negotiating matters between the public body and/or its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Ellison?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzel?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Just a couple minutes ago, grab a glass of water.
Yeah.
Anybody else need a couple minutes?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to adjourn from executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Run this out of here. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do we have any motions from executive session?
I would make a motion to approve the OT, the PT, and the COTA contracts as presented.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Mr. Ellison?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzel?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
I would also make a motion to approve the superintendent's contract addendum.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzel?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Ellison?
Yes.
All right. Is there any further risks come before the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, goodnight.
Goodnight, Mary. Goodnight, Mary.
I can ask you this.
Actually.
Oh.
All right, you done, Mary?